All right, now I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, moving right along, we have no planning board minutes. We have a couple A and Rs for which I will recuse myself. So Jim, best of luck.
Hide in the back?
I'll be in the back.
I'll come knocking on the door when the time comes. All right, good evening, everyone. We have two A and Rs tonight, and the first one, I'm gonna browse his agenda here, is Williston, Northampton for the endorsement of A and R to create a parcel to be conveyed to the city of East Hampton at or about 198 Park Street. Is someone here to speak to that? Come on.
Yes.
What's going on?
So, for the record, my name's Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. Williston has been working with the city to convey a parcel of land on Park Street for, in this case, the new roundabout for the school.
Right. This is the land the board will remember where we had the solar.
We have the solar project here.
The road in.
Road into the solar project. So this parcel is a fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four square foot parcel, which is going to accommodate the roundabout for the school. It will mean that Williston will lose some of the solar panels, locations, and we may have to come back before you to do an amendment plan because those, it's gonna change. But solar project's kinda on hold for right now. Working with Eversource and their process, so.
Now Jeff brought out the other one, why don't we deal with them together because they're really kind of joined at the hip.
And then, correct. So then, in exchange, this is Brewster Avenue.
The one way.
That one way, this way, it runs from Park Street, I'm sorry, Main Street.
Yeah, Main Street, the other way.
Main Street to Park Street.
Yep.
Williston owns all the property on either side of Brewster Avenue, so that this twenty-four hundred and sixty-six oh seven square foot parcel of land would be conveyed by the city to Williston. It's noted on the plan as not a building lot, as recommended by the city attorney in building number one.
Right here, not a building lot.
Correct. Now, there are some utilities within, which will still be maintained for, for the city use and Williston's use, of course, that run through the street.
The purpose of this is to turn it into a lot, so that it then can be conveyed. The purpose of this is to split this into two lots, so that it then can be conveyed, and this is part of an overall trade exchange that's going on.
Correct.
Benefit the school, remove this road
Right.
from public use.
Correct. City Council, we went before them, approved the exchange last Wednesday night.
Yeah, July 10th, yep.
At their meeting.
So an A and R requires frontage, that's really our one requirement.
Correct.
Show us the frontage on this.
So, it has frontage on both Park Street and Main Street.
And how wide is that?
And that is thirty-five feet on Main Street and fifty-four point nine three on Park Street.
Now, as a non-building lot,
Right.
I'm sure that modifies the requirements from the standard one hundred or one twenty for the larger zoning.
There was two reasons that I think the city attorney recommended that the plans be marked as not a building lot. One, it's just for clarity, that that's not really the intent. And then second, because it doesn't have the required frontage to be a building lot, so.
Which makes this a zero requirement, approval not required. Well, that's easy.
Yeah, right.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
And then, of course, the Park Street one has quite a bit more frontage because you're going around the, you're going around the curvature of the road, so that.
Tons of frontage.
Yeah, that's gonna be, you know, all the frontage necessary.
Yeah, and you still have plenty here for what your anticipated use is, but here's interesting, fifty feet.
Right, so this is the original street line.
Yep.
All right, Park Street, so now it would go, and I'm not sure how the city's gonna contain, they're gonna have to convey the rest of it, it's all city land for the rest of the roundabout.
So, I mean, you'd be left here, this is, I'm just noticing this now, with fifty feet of frontage on the main road, and, you know, you already have your driveway coming in, so that's not really messing with any of that, but you have plenty of road frontage here, but this is still a public way, but there's.
This would be the portion of the public way.
I'm talking about for you in terms of this lot still being a legal lot, you know, because we're leaving only fifty feet on that edge. Do you see what I'm saying here?
Well, I think as, I think as Mark said, if you, if we could quickly overlay the roundabout onto that.
Here?
Yeah, that's gonna become the public way.
This will create more coming in, okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, so the roundabout would create the right-of-way street, right-of-way along this whole entire length for Williston's parcel B.
All right, thanks for driving that nail into my brain, it took two hits of the hammer to get it in there. Questions? We typically don't open this kind of thing because approval is not required up to the public, but if anyone wants to speak about any of this. No? Okay. In that case, I'm looking for a motion to endorse the A and R for a parcel to be conveyed to the city of East Hampton at 198 Park Street, and for the endorsement of an A and R plan to create a parcel to be conveyed to the Williston, Northham School than the boundary of the Brewster Avenue right-of-way. I need two.
So move.
All right. So two, two motions, one for each.
Okay.
There you go. Just saying essentially what I said. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And the other one?
I'll second that one also.
Okay, putting the first one up, which is 198 Park Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against or abstentions? And the next one, Brewster Avenue, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? It's unanimous. Do we need any signatures?
Yep.
I will bring Jesse out so that he can continue the rest of it while I dutifully go in the back and sign.
I did six copies, Jeff, so I just need a copy in the Mylar bag.
Jim, you want me to wait for you or do you want us to start?
No, I'll keep going.
All right, you can listen. All right, moving right along to the continued public hearing for Beacon Solar LLC for special permit for solar energy facilities. Welcome back, gentlemen. And just for the record, we did do a site visit, when was that, July 1st? Yep, July 1st, went out and visited the site. Walked and drove around, also went and viewed from Maxine Circle. So that was helpful.
Okay, I have some data for you.
All right.
This is our formal response letter to the comments from the previous meeting in the site walk. And then this is our detailed analysis of the culvert crossings.
Okay. Okay, great.
Do you have any extras, or is that all of them?
Yeah, we have extras.
Would you, would you be able to put one of those out on that table for anyone else who's here to be able to see that?
They're all fine, Jeff, all of you, hand them out.
Great.
Sorry to keep you in there.
It was quick, I barely got to start my nap.
Are these yours?
Those are yours.
Okay.
And these we just got from the applicant.
Okay, thanks. Your nap.
All right, proceed.
All set.
Sure.
I'm Nico Galitu, the project manager for Beacon Solar LLC, and I have with me Brad Saunders from G.I. Consultants. Okay, so tonight, we're in front of you for a continuance of the application for special permit for Beacon Solar LLC on 50 Florence Road. The plan for tonight is to go over the questions and comments that were put forward by the board at the last meeting, and as well, like, and answer the comments and concerns from the community as well. So, to start off, I, we should go through the comments and questions from the town staff, and then we will address the comments and questions from the community in the second portion of this presentation.
Great.
Okay? So the site plan is out here, just for reference. I wanna start tonight with the, what I think is the most important point that came out of last public hearing in the site walk. It's with regards to the landscaping buffer. So we did a bit of additional research after a conversation engaging the abutters, and the first element of response that we wanna provide tonight is that we're gonna accommodate the residents in Maxine Circle further, as well as the board. We are proposing an increase in height and width of the landscaping buffers at planning. We recommend planting weeping widows because of how high and wide they are. They are already present on the site. One of the abutters on 12 Maxine Circle has them, he planted them, I don't exactly know when, but he has two of those weeping widows in his backyard, they are fully grown now, and he said that he's very satisfied with their vegetative and landscaping capacities. So our proposal is to add weeping widows, and they're gonna be eight to ten feet at planting. This is an increase from the six to eight that we proposed for other plants.
This is a third layer? Before you had two, two layers of trees, now there's three?
Correct. So it's, it's gonna be not necessarily three areas, but a mix of every one of them.
Okay.
The benefit of this is you have shrubs that are thick at the base, and then the oaks, they're higher, take more time to grow, and the weeping widows grow really quickly as I'm gonna go over it right now.
Great.
Excellent.
So, we are not going with more than eight to ten feet of planting, because when you plant trees at a height that's above that, it increases risk for premature death due to transplant shock. So basically, when you're putting in a big tree into the ground, its, its roots are cut, right, to put them into the ground, and there's a period where that tree needs to have extensive care for it to be able to grow steadily. So, the weeping widow can grow over two feet in height over a single growing season, and will reach a mature height of about thirty feet, and this is really important, with its spread at about thirty-five feet in fifteen years or less. This is one of the fastest growing trees out there, and it's also very wide, so that's why we went for it. Okay, this is the first part. Does anybody have any questions?
You've, you've addressed this with the actual abutters on Maxine Circle, is that right? You talked to them about that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked to them about that, but also we wanted to take this opportunity since it's a public hearing to bring our findings.
Sure. And we'll check in with them, we can have any comments or questions as well, once you're done with your presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, the second question from the staff was, where are the trees to be removed? And the board wanted to provide, sorry, the board wanted an answer on the size and the species of each one. So, following that, we did a survey of trees on July 10th, 2019, and those are, by the way, provided in Exhibit D or a submission that you have in front of you. And our findings are as follows. It is anticipated that a total, that a total of five mature trees and eleven saplings will be removed in order to construct and maintain the proposed solar project. The trees to be removed are highlighted in yellow, and the listing provided in Exhibit D. Right, do you have anything to that?
Yeah, I just, there's a, there's also a map included with that exhibit. This is a copy of it, it shows the actual locations of the trees and shrubs that were identified, they're in red. We focused only on the area on the site, of course, that's actually going to be close to the construction area. And so, so that's why we've, we narrowed it down to the number that we have. In terms of the removal, the, primarily, they're in that area in the first array that I pointed to in the, during the site visit up on the hill. And there are a couple of mature trees up in there, particularly some shadmiardias. There's a couple of trees down here that will also need removal, and it looks like we have one at the entrance, which is identified as A on the list.
I see a red circle at the bottom array, but it might be the letter O, I'm not quite sure, the bottom array. Is that a tree as well?
It's a tree, but that's not going to be.
Okay, it was a red, so.
The, the circle, it's actually a no.
It is a no, okay.
So, so the first of the red maple that had a four-inch diameter.
Okay.
So this, this is the survey that's showing the eleven trees and saplings that are in the work area, but then there's only five of them, right, one, two, three, four, or seven that are being removed?
There's about seventeen trees in shrub groupings. Of those, five are mature trees, greater than twelve inches at diameter at breast type, which is four and a half feet off the ground. Five of those
Okay.
would be removed. There would also be eleven saplings, which are defined as four inches diameter or less. And you can see from the list that they're primarily one-inch
Yeah.
Okay.
Two-inch saplings.
Okay.
Okay.
This, by the way, just to make sure everyone's oriented, the blue is the wetland, the red is the hundred-foot wetland buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks Brett. I think we can move on and address the question about the weight load.
Yeah, the other question was particularly of interest to the Conservation Commission, was the culverts, and we need to replace them. We originally had proposed to replace all the culverts. So, we had the project engineer went out last week, looked at each culvert, and then did a structural analysis, which is this Exhibit E of each of the, each of the culverts. There are actually seven of them. The, and just to point out where they are. The first one, of course, was the one that we saw at the very beginning coming in. There's actually two at this location. One is four inches in diameter, and the other's like two and a half inches. Not sure why they put those things like that. There's another one right here, which is an eighteen-inch diameter PVC. There's another one right here, which is an eight-inch, excuse me, they're both eight-inch Yeah, they're both eight-inch diameter PVC, so this one, and this one. Then there's a, another one right there, and that one is, which is a larger culvert. That one is an eighteen-inch polyethylene pipe. And then the last one is the one just before you come into the field area, so that's right here. And that one is a
Twelve.
twelve-inch diameter ductile iron pipe. So the analysis was done on all of them, except for the first one. We have a little bit of an issue with the first one, it would need some more time to study. The reason being is all of the other culverts are known material, PVC, polyethylene pipe, ductile iron pipe. And so you can look at the size and you know what the capacity is on them. They are all, given the, the soil cover that's out there, they're all suitable for handling. What we would anticipate is the largest load, which would be the fire truck. We got in touch with the fire department to find out what their largest vehicle is that they would anticipate using. We spoke to Wayne Heneman, who's the deputy fire chief. He told us that thirty-seven thousand, five hundred pounds is the weight of the largest vehicle that they'd be using on the site. So we used that as the basis for doing the structural analysis. And all of the six that I pointed out, excluding this first one, are, have been found to be suitable. The first culvert, however, is a, it's a concrete box, thirty-six inches in diameter and square, with a round opening, okay? And the opening is
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two inches in diameter, so it's, it's plenty good size. The issue that we're having right now is we're not sure exactly what the concrete box is made of. We know it's concrete, we don't know if it's reinforced.
I'm a little confused.
We're not sure whether it was poured in place.
I thought you were replacing these.
We, we were originally going to be doing it, just as a matter of course.
Right, but now you're considering keeping them,
Yes.
and you've discovered that all but one, until you're done with the research, you want to keep.
Because of the less impactful wetlands.
You wanna keep.
Correct. If we can, if we can. And that's because of the less impactful wetlands. The Conservation Commission was very concerned about putting in new culverts, and rightly so. So, based on their input, we went back, we took a look at each one to see whether, in fact, we actually need to replace them. And so that's the, that's the point of this, this exercise. And like I said, we will need a little more time to study that one, just to make sure whether that needs to be replaced or not.
Jeff, has this gone to the city engineer yet, or did we just get this now?
This came in to us today. Did this get presented to the Conservation Commission last night?
Last year.
Okay.
And they're handling the water component of this, correct?
Yes.
So, I think, for me personally, their being comfortable with that would mean a lot, hearing from you.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to wait for them anyways, but I think, I think if the city engineer, I don't know if they're gonna ask for it, but if we can get the city engineer to take a look at that, just to make sure it's.
If I may relay, I guess the question is whether the Conservation Commission had any discussions of whether they would be seeking third-party review for any part of the project.
They haven't said anything yet.
Okay. I think there's, that, that's really the two courses of action for the commission are to rely on the city engineer's input, or to potentially seek third-party review for, for the project in general, for, for stormwater runoff, which the culverts will be part of that.
Great.
We did continue that hearing until the 12th of August. We should give us sufficient time to finish our analysis of that culvert.
Sure, and did they give you any sort of recommendations on providing the information in enough time so that whether it's, whether it's the city engineer or someone else could review it before August 12th?
They didn't say anything to that effect, but we understand that, yes. We can't expect an answer one day after delivery.
Fair.
And just while we're on the subject of the fire department, there was a letter in the file we received from the fire department. A twelve-foot access road width at wetland crossings for the proposed Florence Road solar project is not an emergency response concern of the East Hampton Fire Department. That's from.
We request that letter again in response for a request from this board.
Right, great.
Since we have to get more information from them on it, my recommendation is we pass over the culverts for now and come back to it.
Yeah, we, no, I think we'll, we'll wait and hear from either the city engineer or the Conservation Commission if they have input, we'll have that before our final meeting.
Okay, great, thanks Brett. That concludes it for the questions and comments from the town staff. Now we can move on to the questions from the community.
Great.
Okay, great. So the first question that came up was pertaining to the hazards of this system, and the board had said that they were expecting very thorough responses regarding to the hazards, which are included in here. I'm just gonna go over our response, re-equip the end, and give you some time to read it after this meeting. So, solar projects and the components that comprise them are non-hazardous and extremely low risk to surrounding communities. The panels that make up the project are primarily made of silicon, a very common naturally occurring element, surrounded by tempered glass. They require no fluids or petrochemicals to generate electricity, making them much safer than other energy generating projects and ensuring no spills occur. In addition, the potential for explosions, fires, or lightning strikes hitting solar farms or utility poles is the same as any other ordinary electrical component, including those within typical residential homes. In the rare case that an emergency occurs and a fire breaks out, we have detailed procedures in place to appropriately respond in accordance with the National Electric and International Fire Codes. Our site-specific emergency and respond plan was submitted to the planning board, and we monitor our projects twenty-four seven using state-of-the-art remote systems.
Great.
Any comments, questions there? Great. Moving on to the next one, this was also a big one. Will this project make runoff or flooding worse in my area? The stormwater pollution prevention plan and stormwater permit ensures that site runoff does not change during or after construction. The SWP P P is designed in accordance with both local and state Department of Environmental Protection requirements to ensure stormwater quality either remains the same or is improved by construction activity. As part of it, the site will be stabilized with grasses that will provide sediment and erosion control. So moving on to the next one, in our initial civil set provided to the board, a request was made by the planning board to add a detail about the energy storage and, you know, in addition to the inverter pads and the panels, and we've added a few exhibits to that effect. It's Exhibit A and B, which really gives you a good idea of what the layout is gonna look like and how the battery energy storage component looks like when put on site. So, in Exhibit E, the first one is the utility solar components. If you look right above the solar panels that you have here, you have the interconnection setup. This will answer a lot of questions about what the poles will look like once the project is constructed. You see the six utility poles there on access? You have three for the utility and three for us for security measures. So the racking structure, I'm sure all of you are familiar with what that looks like, as well as the modules. And then in the back there, you have the transformer, which is the little green box, and then the inverter pads, which is the white box. And if you turn the page, you have a four-megawatt-hour energy storage box, and you can see what that looks like. Those, that, like, those types of equipments are usually within the center of the site, again, because the transformer makes noise and the inverter makes noise. We went over this at the last meeting, but just FYI, this is also shown on our site plan. All that equipment is at the center of the site, to reduce any noise that would fill out of the logic batteries. Okay, with that, I will segue into the batteries. There was a question from the community regarding the batteries and how safe they were. FYI, the battery energy storage systems were recent additions to solar systems, but the battery technology itself has been around for more than thirty years. So it's something that we know and that we've been working with. So, the energy storage system proposed for Beacon Solar will be made up of lithium-ion batteries. Those are the same batteries that you have in your phones. Essentially, the system is comprised of smaller batteries, just like the Tesla Powerwall that you have in your home, and they're secured within a sealed cabinet. And that cabinet is on a concrete pad. The cabinet is built and tested to seal and contain the contents under any adverse conditions. And it's also equipped with a fire suppressant system in case of fire. That battery also is controlled remotely by a twenty-four-seven control system. The reason why we do that is we control when the battery charges and discharges, and obviously we want it to be operational twenty-four seven because we get revenue from that too. So that team, as soon as there is something wrong with the battery, if that happens, is immediately notified, and there is a response team that goes on site. That team coordinates with the local fire department and ensures any situations are contained within the project area. That's very important. I've added additional information in Exhibit B and C regarding the battery, and it's I've added additional information in exhibit B and C regarding the battery and its decommissioning. Okay, finally, what is the direct benefit of this project to me? That is also a question that came up at the last meeting. So our projects create clean energy without emissions or pollutants. They're renewable and they're green. And we wanna stress that there are also immediate benefits to the city of East Hampton. We are currently negotiating a pilot agreement with the city that will provide more than a million dollars of revenue over the lifetime of the project that can be used for city services, and that includes supporting the new school, so local schools and parks. In addition, this project will offset four thousand tons of carbon dioxide alley, which is equivalent of taking seven hundred and seventy cars off the road every single year. This is an additional big step in the right direction for the city of East Hampton to become an even greener community. Finally, Beacon Solar is going to be a community solar project, meaning that customers of EverSource, which serve this region, will be able to benefit from this project directly if they subscribe to this program, this community solar project, and they will be able to offset their utility bill, electricity utility bill, by about ten percent. So this is pretty important.
Are you saying that local electric utility bills could potentially be or will be reduced by ten percent because of this project?
Because of this project, we foresee a reduction of ten percent on your electric utility bill, and that's residential. So everybody that subscribes to this program, and we're working with EverSource to see if East Hampton can have kind of first grabs on this, you will definitely have a reduction. It's estimates, we've seen numbers ranging from eight to fifteen percent, so we went with ten conservative.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? I just had one, I know you mentioned with the screening with respect to Maxine Circle. Have you had conversations with the Butters, either with Lathrop or we also had some visitors last time that were on Florence Road across the street? Have you discussed any of the screening with them?
Correct, yeah, and I can defer this to Ethan who's been engaging those the Butters. But we've we've engaged in conversations with them. Correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't there at the the site walk, but has anybody from Florence Road expressed significant concerns with visibility?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, I mean, there was a gentleman who came to the first meeting and spoke about that. I mean, I don't know how concerned he was or or if he was, you know, when he saw the plan, if that was okay, but that's that's what I'm basing my comment on. Any communications with Lathrop?
I defer that.
Do you wanna, sure, why don't you jump up here?
Are we still supposed to be speaking in this microphone?
If you can, yeah.
Hi, Ethan Winter, Cypress Creek. We've had a number of conversations with residents at Lathrop. I was there on the third to take photos from the southwest corner at Mulberry Lane to get a good handle on the natural vegetation that's there. The project is five to seven hundred feet from the corner of that residential area. And there's a very healthy natural buffer there with hardwoods and then some pines that are actually coming up in front of the hardwoods there.
Remind me again of when you think the project construction would start?
Yeah, so this is depending on the utility. Obviously, we would like it to be as soon as possible, but my my gut feeling on when it's gonna happen, when we're gonna get the green light from the utility is like mid twenty twenty.
Okay, I mean, just from my own impression of the site visit, I think that Lathrop would have less impact from the project once it's done, but I think that drop area where the construction will be taking place was looked like right on that side and kind of thin screening for what's there, at least when we were there. But and so maybe it's a temporary screening or something like that. And I mean, we haven't heard from them, so I don't know for sure, but that seemed like the only part there that seemed like it might be a potential problem. Have you spoken to those residents about the screening when you went out there or not really?
We met with Tom Wright and some of the residents, I guess that was prior to our first meeting. We haven't heard any major concerns since.
Okay.
Given the aspect of the project, they would be looking at basically, the dead winter, if there was no leafage at all, you would see probably the the back of the first row.
Yep.
At about seven hundred feet of distance.
Yeah.
So one thing we could look at is material screening if that was requested on that.
Right, and so I mean, we've done that in the past where there's construction stuff where it's just gonna be that six-month, eighteen-month, whatever the window is, that there's something that's temporarily erected, but I guess we can.
Yeah, if it's if it's a concern that's raised, we'll address that.
Okay.
Correct, and something that we can do also is put a green fence just around the construction laydown. We've been doing that on other projects and that basically shields it from any visibility.
Okay.
There was one other set of Butters, I think it's number three, Maxine. So during the site walk, we viewed the property, we viewed the project from ten and twelve, and then it was up around the loop and everyone traversed over to someone else's backyard, I think that was three. So did you have any discussions with?
Yeah, I think that I think there may have been six.
Six, I think it was six, yeah.
Cory Pucker?
Yes.
Yep, so we've been in touch with him. He had questions about the battery system, would provide the same information that you have. He also asked about line of sight.
Yeah, his his yard ended up being a little higher than the ones that were closer, I think, when we walked over there.
So, you know, a simple fix there is to extend, just make sure that our our tree line goes north all the way into that that window from what you can see from his backyard.
Okay. All right, thank you. Public comments, questions? Specifically, any residents of Maxine? Will you come up just so we can keep it on the record? Thank you.
You know, I talk about fires and planting grasses.
Name and address real quickly, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Paddock Valley, ten Maxine, sorry.
Thank you.
You're talking about planting more grasses and fires. Well, at this point in time, if there was a fire there, it's gonna sweep right across our lot. That grass is it's dry, it's it's a tinderbox, so how fast would you be responding? That would just be wildfire, that's my concern now. You're talking about possibly planting more grass, which if it's not getting the proper water and sunlight because of the panels, it's gonna dry out or die, it's gonna be even drier back there, so that's now become a new concern after listening to you tonight. And I'm still not convinced with the water, which I guess we need to go to the conservation, which I didn't realize there wasn't even last night.
Yeah, they're gonna do an in-depth analysis of the stormwater.
Because the research I've been reading about, the panels obstruct the ground, which hardens the soil, which reduces the intake of water, which is gonna push more water off, so again, I still still think we're gonna have more water, but.
Yeah, so I mean, the state the state tells us that that it's treated as an impervious surface, so it's not like paving or something like that or putting a building up that it will absorb the water the same way. That's not my world, but the Conservation Commission does this all the time and they will be giving it a hard look for sure. The grass, I would like to hear from the applicant, but before you leave, what are your thoughts on this new screening proposal with the willows?
We're not, we're looking at a bunch of trees, not a field, not wild, and I haven't heard any talk about wildlife.
Yeah.
There's tons and tons of wildlife back there that are now gonna be restricted because there's gonna be fences. We have deer back there, bears. Where are they going? They have no home anymore. They can't get through the fence, they can't graze, they can't, so again, I don't, I didn't see that addressed and that was a concern.
But the screening itself, I mean, I understand that you're not gonna look at an empty field anymore. That's sort of the nature of any development there, but.
And it's not, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be beneficial to us. It takes years. Those those willow trees were planted when we moved in twenty-five years ago. Our neighbor planted them the year we moved in, so they're twenty-five years old.
Okay.
It's gonna take.
How big were they when they were planted? Do you remember?
They were little, they were probably, I don't know, maybe four or five feet, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so hopefully this will be a little faster if they're eight to ten feet when they're planting, but I understand.
Yeah, that not, you're talking ten, ten years at least, and we'll be long gone.
You've been super helpful in giving us the right kind of information we need, but I have one question if you'll allow. When I was there last, there was a gentleman, I think he had the horse farm there.
Yes.
And he mentioned to us that the grasses that were there, that they grow hay and they cut them and the hay becomes the food for the horses. And he was surprised that that hadn't been cut yet. I'm wondering if it's been cut since we were there.
Something was out there.
So the grasses are much lower now?
Yes.
Okay.
They they don't cut right behind us.
Oh, it's just some places, it's not everything, of course it wouldn't be, and certainly not the wetland.
No, ours is tough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nico, can you address the the situation with the grass? I think to the extent there's a fire risk there, and maybe if you wanna touch on the wildlife, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or?
Yeah, sure, so the first question regarding the grass and the fire. So there is grass there right now, and what we are planning to do is to plant grass under the panels, and that is really good for erosion. And if there is a fire, then I'm not worried about the grass so much. I focus on the batteries, like the inverters, like that stuff that, you know, could leak or, you know, is potentially a hazard. We are just recreating the conditions that are there now with everything that's under the panels, that includes the grass.
Is your adding fire?
Yes, it's 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 a development, it is a development.
Oh, I understand, it's a concern.
Yeah, and and we do everything we can to mitigate that to the extent possible because I don't like the fire in my project and, you know. Absolutely, so this is something that we look at twenty-four seven. There's always someone looking at this site, making sure that everything is going well. And we have an emergency response plan that's out there that was submitted to the board and the fire department, just in case anything goes wrong.
And what about the wildlife issue?
We've we've looked into that too. It's very tough for, and we've we've been in close communications. It's very tough for us to assess what kind of displacement there's gonna be, whether it's construction or the project itself. But we do have little openings in our fences that allow for small wildlife. Definitely don't want deer going in there and possibly getting any trocute. But we have openings, it's eight feet, openings into our fences to let wildlife go through and run through the other project site.
And we did, we did talk at the first meeting about how the two arrays are separately fenced. It does sort of allow, our bylaws require allowing for sort of wildlife corridors, and I think that that design does does a fair job of that as well.
Yeah, that, I I just wanted to add to that, that that is the case, that we are maintaining the wildlife guard is through. And so the fencing is very specific to the arrays themselves, not around the entire site by any manner of means. And I'll also just remind everyone that the project occupies about twenty-eight acres out of a hundred and thirty-seven and a half. So the rest remains as open wildlife habitat. And as Nico said, the fences themselves will be raised off the ground about six inches so that small wildlife can get through, can pass through, but larger will be kept out of that of that area.
Interesting, okay.
And of course, birds aren't affected at all.
Right, okay. If you, can you come back up, sorry?
That's okay. I guess I'm, I've been doing a lot of research, I I'm conflicted because, sorry, I'll get to my. I have read somewhere where actually birds are very effective because they fly into the panels and the heat generated and wings have actually been burned, and so I have read articles that that's not the case, they are affected.
Can you kind of address that, that different matter solar? So that that is, that's a, that's a good point. I think we need to make a separation between like there's two different types of solar farms. There's the ones that have mirrors instead of panels and that those mirrors reflect the energy from the sun into a tower that is, has salt at its peak and that heats up the salt and creates energy. Those type of solar farms are indeed sometimes have hazards when they do the maintenance and they shift the panels up. That creates a heat radius all around the solar array that could affect birds. We are not developing any of those products. We only have polycrystalline panels who actually absorb the light and the heat. I mean, you could put your hand on it and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't burn you. There is heat that comes out of those panels, but there is no, there is not any impact on the birds flying over.
Thanks.
They defecate on our panels, and we have to clean that, but that's about as close as we come to it.
Okay.
And your interaction with them, yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Come on up.
Everyone's our wildlife experts.
Deborah, I guess twenty-one Grove Land Street. So you were saying there was, how how much under the, is it eight?
I think they said six, I think six inches was the.
I said feet, I said inches, I think that.
Eight feet, eight feet seemed unlikely, but but I think Brad corrected that with the six inches.
So six inches, okay. And like my main concern was about the construction. The time of the construction, the time of year, the timeframe during the week that they're doing it, as far as employees, the birds and the animals, depending on the season. Like when the bears come out of hibernation, when they're giving birth to their animals, the birds are nesting. Is there a certain timeframe that is as for the neighbors and the animals? You know, ten to five, Monday through Friday, middle of summer, I mean, how does that, do you have a specific timeframe and periods that everybody is relatively safe and happy? I I, it's just these questions are coming up.
Yeah, so I do think like the seasonal part, I think what Nico was saying is they're sort of depending on the regulators for when they can start and they'll do their project when they can and, but maybe he can speak to sort of the schedule and the timeline for the construction whenever they are able to break ground or get approved.
Yeah, 'cause you had said sixteen weeks, so three to four months, can't do it in the winter, so that makes it it last time. Is that what?
No, you can say if you want, if you have a follow-up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so the schedule, yes, it's twelve to sixteen weeks, and I hate to say this, but sometimes it happens in the winter. For my construction folks, it's the most difficult time of the year to build a project, but when you get a green light from the utility, you just go, 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 and you try to make that construction period as short as possible. I do wanna say though that luckily, the construction of a solar farm is not one of a residential development or, you know, so the sound, the noise levels are not gonna be half as high as that. What is really gonna, I think, the most sound that comes out of the construction is when you're driving the piles in the ground. And again, we have pretty big buffers here, so I'm pretty sure you won't. I don't know what the effect is gonna be on the bears. I I don't know how they're gonna react to it, I know that there are bears in the neighborhood. Well, yeah, we try to keep the noise levels, you know, down low as much as possible. And again, it could happen any time of year, so I I can't tell you now when it's gonna happen, but I can definitely notify the Butters ahead of time of when it's gonna happen. As far as the hours of construction, we comply with the building code and the town requirements. So usually, you know, seven AM to nine PM, eight AM, depending on the code. And we don't work weekends, usually on this we have a variance or like a.
And just sort of following up on that, what what about sort of delivery? I know there's there's the laydown area where they're gonna be bringing, I presume, all the panels and materials. What's sort of the schedule for that, like how long does that take? And is that, you know, I'm assuming we're not getting eighteen-wheelers into that area, but maybe I'm wrong? Like what's the size of vehicles that'll be coming in for that?
Yeah, so it's trucks, trucks are coming in, not eighteen-wheelers most likely, but I have it down here. It's, what was the number, Brad, that we put in the application?
Thirty-seven thousand.
No, for the amount of trucks over the construction period. I can look that up, I don't have the number in my mind. Let me see, it's somewhere down here. Yeah, so I have it down here, the first two weeks is where the truck traffic is gonna be the most intense to bring in all the equipment.
Okay.
And then they steeply decline after that.
Okay.
You said not eighteen-wheelers, but I'm imagining these piles, which are, what, twelve feet long-ish, maybe longer?
I can, yeah, I can provide the exact trucks.
I don't need to know specifically, but I mean, if they're bringing a lot of twelve-foot piles, there's clearly gotta be some, you know.
Yeah, some big truck.
Yeah, flatbed.
Yeah, I can go back to you and, uh, we might need to use eighteen wheelers for that.
Are you referring to a construction schedule, is that what you just pulled from, and is that a part of the original submission?
Correct, there's one, yeah. There's one in the submission, yeah, that's what I was looking for, actually.
Is there construction phasing?
Okay.
It's actually exhibit H.
Okay.
And it's also, uh, on the erosion control point, it's a.
About eighty-five.
Okay. Um.
Jeff has the look of a man with a question.
Jeff. Man, I have a couple, I have a couple of questions.
Please. Please. Just real quick, I have it down here, one to ten eighteen wheelers.
Okay, over the course of those two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I have a short list, um, of items to ask about. So the first is that, uh, the decommissioning plan still is, needs to be reviewed by the city attorney. So, I mean, I think for your purposes, um, the applicant submitted an estimate. The expectation will be most likely that the city attorney is gonna find that, um, due to, you know, future unknowns, that the planning board can adjust that up to the hundred and twenty-five percent limit, uh, based on the, the most recent previous solar permit. I think that, my understanding is that the decommissioning plan may have been a generic assessment of, of, of this number of panels and not necessarily the.
Site specific.
Site specific, the length of the road, the amount of vehicle trips in and outside. I think there'll be a way to justify the increase and, um, I think we, I can work diligently to get that review prior to the next hearing.
In the past, we've had the city engineer look at it too, is, to sort of see if it makes sense.
Right, the amount of time devoted to.
Right, I think that makes sense to have the city engineer look at that too, 'cause.
Yeah.
Town council may not have actually been involved in any decommissioning in the past.
Okay, um, so that is something that will be forthcoming and the ordinance allows the planning board with some justification to go up to a hundred and twenty-five percent over the estimate for the decommissioning. Um, the fence type was something that, you know, I thought was worthy of discussion. It looks like from the specs that it's just a standard galvanized steel chain link fence. And I think, um, at least in one of the locations where it would be visible, um, especially for Maxine Circle, I think the discussion whether, would be whether there could be some, um, coating on that fence, whether it's black or green, some other. So they usually have that, uh, non-metallic covering on some fences.
In, in the fence itself, like.
Not necessarily the slats, but the fence, the fence material.
Slats.
Coloring, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the painted or coated, yeah, so it's not quite as jarring when you look out there.
Yeah.
Is it possible to do almost like buffer fencing in case there is noise coming out of those? Um, containers?
You mean with less permeability?
Exactly, so if there is any humming or anything in the middle of the night, that will help buffer any sounds, because I know they said there's not going to be, but.
Yeah, the distance from those where there's noise is pretty close, and I think the way they've got them placed, they're on the far side of that array.
You would still hear it, trust me, because sounds coming off of that, those fields, because the sounds and everything, they just, as you know, it, it echoes. I mean, I can hear crickets in the middle of the night, or frogs, you know, we can hear their, um, the farm.
Yeah.
They have, uh, some of their workers had a party way out in the field, this was one of our son was a police officer. I had called him at twelve-thirty at night, he investigated. It was their workers out, way out in the field, having a party, and it sounded like they were in our backyard, so the sound, it does travel.
Absolutely, I agree.
So maybe, it's a, I'm sorry, but going back, maybe you could put like a buffer to help.
You can hear people talk, that are in the corrals in the back of our house, in the back of the horse farm, on a night, quiet night. We can hear them speaking in normal voices, you can hear them on our deck.
Correct.
Okay.
Not yelling and not screaming, just normal conversations.
So just one thing that I wanna say, there's gonna be ambient noise coming out of, from the array at night. There is no sun, the batteries are not operating at night. Um, there could be, there could be a little hum during the day, but again, the inverters and the transformers are pretty far from your property and it will not exceed the noise of a regular conversation. So if there's ambient noise around your house, a car passing by, anything like that, you won't be able to hear it, I just wanted to put it out there.
And I think I defer to the board, whether that's something that, whether you would require a more formal response to that. Especially about where the, so on the, on the site plan, there's, there's two locations where the equipment would be.
Right.
Whether that's something you think is worth exploring, I did have a question about that.
Sure.
Not about the noise per se, but, um, I'm a little bit unclear. If, if I, if the, if the information submitted is clear to distinguish between an inverter, a transformer and the batteries? So the information that I see shows an inverter and transformer throughout, um, but it's not clear where the batteries are positioned in this mix. Um, in exhibit B, you know, just the, the specs that are shown just are a little bit conflicting. So, um, the exhibit B, which is this image here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so just for example, like the, the, whatever that piece of equipment is, is manufactured by Lockheed Martin. And then you have specs by a different company called Sunny Central, and these are all labeled as inverters. Um, it's just not clear how the batteries fit in, um, and then the, the diagram at the, towards the end would show sort of the components. Includes something called the BESS, which looks like the trailer.
That's the energy storage, yeah.
Right, so, and then that has an inverter, transformer and batteries, all separate. So, um, going back to the original, originally submitted spec sheet, you know, it goes back to the, the, uh, the concrete pad will house the inverter and transformer, and then the batteries are somewhere. It's just not really clear how this is, how this is, um, you know, going to position itself on the site plan. So if you can offer some clarity on that.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Um, so the pictures that we gave you here are for informative purposes. Uh, that's mimics the equipment that's gonna be there, but the brands can vary. Sometimes we use Lockheed Martin, sometimes we use AHI. Um, BESS is the short for battery energy storage, by the way. Those, that equipment varies in, like, depending on the technology that's available, when we're ready to build, uh, the supply available, et cetera. Um, the two first pictures were really to put the equipment in situation, just to give you an idea of what the actions physically look like. 'Cause I know a spec sheet on a piece of technical equipment like an inverter is not that exciting. Um, so I put the images here just to give you an idea. And then if you go up the first, like, the first page of exhibit A, the SMA, this, this is actually the inverter. So the inverter looks like this, and we use Sunny Central SMA for most of our projects, so this is pretty much what's your, what you're gonna have. Um, the same goes for the battery pack, it's IHI. Um, if you move past like the first pages with SMA, you get the page on the batteries from Power Electronics. This is what the casing, like a single unit of a battery pack looks like.
Okay.
What you saw on the first picture, the full container, is multiple units of those put together. So to give you an idea of what it looks like, on this page right here, a few pages down, you have like six battery packs put one to another. And then those are put into a container, and that container is put on a concrete pad.
So they'll all be for someone that's outside inside a big container like this?
Correct, exactly like the, the picture.
A shipping container.
Correct.
So can we just go a couple of pages further? So past the red diagram.
Yep.
And then there's this photo here. So, you know, the caption shows the interior of the container, and then the right is an external view of the battery storage container at a Cypress Creek, Cypress Creek project in North Carolina. This battery can store one megawatt of electricity. And so what this appears to me to show is, not in a box, but also a pretty large battery system on a concrete pad plus the transformer. And so what, what's missing for me is where is the inverter? So I, I really wanna drill down on whether those boxes depict on the site plan, showing the concrete pad. To me, the first spec shows that it's gonna support the, uh, the transformer and the inverter. And what's not, what's not clear to me is where this enclosure for the battery is going to go, and it doesn't appear to be shown on the site plans at all.
Yeah, that's a great point, and this is something that we talked about at the first meeting as well.
Okay.
Is we were gonna add a detail on the site plan of where exactly each component is gonna be.
Okay.
So we are waiting on the feedback on the culverts, um, to update the site plan, so we haven't touched the site plan since the last meeting. But what we will have, and we can add little captions to each equipment if you want, usually what we do is we put a big inverter patch, just like this one.
Yeah.
That shows, you know, the three components, right?
Right.
We can put each box on its own.
Yeah, I think a detailed, a detailed plan for each one would be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, we can definitely.
And so, just to follow up on that, so the inverters, the transformers and the battery packs are all only located on those two pads, right?
This is how a current design shows it, yeah.
Right, there's not, none of those three items are anywhere else throughout the array or on the site, it'll just be on those two pads that are marked.
No, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think some more.
Makes sense that you would put those together.
Right, but it's not something where it's located at the end of every row or anything like that, that's, that's, um, so, okay. So I, I do think some detailed plans of the actual layouts for each one of those pads and what's gonna be there would be helpful.
Right, and I think, you know, at that point, it's going to become an impervious surface, so I just wanna make sure that.
Right.
If that pad gets larger to accommodate the three pieces, that, that gets put before the commission as well, to figure out if that results in anything in terms of drainage.
Thank you, Brad.
One, one thing to keep in mind is the, the detail that showed just the inverter and transformer in the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
That's a smaller rectangle than what's actually on these plans.
Okay.
So I mean substantially smaller. So these, these rectangles are actually sufficiently sized to accommodate the rest, so you're right, you need a, a site plan of each one.
Okay, great.
Good, yep, and then I think, um, the, the only other thing on this list that I have is, is a discussion of trails or existing, I guess, existing trails and potential access through the property. So it came up, I think at the site visit, that, you know, the folks at Heritage Farm had had a handshake agreement to traverse over this property. Um, my understanding is that the applicant has met with Pascama Conservation Trust about trails, and I just, it hasn't come up yet. So I was just hoping we could have a discussion of, of what that looks like for, for you guys as the applicant.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to add this off to Ethan, who's been having those relationships thus far. And I have to say, has been doing a great job.
Uh, Jeff, thanks for raising that, um, this came up actually in our pre-application conversations with the Pascama, uh, with the city planner. Um, just a couple of clarifications, as we described earlier, the lease that we'll have sort of site control over is over twenty-eight acres. So, uh, about a hundred and ten acres remains in its current use, um, and any change in that use would have to come before this group, um, if it were substantial. So we see the project as really stabilizing the conditions as they are. Um, there are interests clearly in connecting, there's some big ideas about connecting from Florence to Echo Dale, uh, somehow across Bassett Brook. Um, we understand that there's real interest both at the city level and with the Conservation Trust in doing something. Um, and that's really something that I think should be raised, um, with the landowner as much as possible. We, we have a fairly limited ability to, to influence that. But Cypress Creek is, uh, you know, willing to do what we can within the confines of what we're proposing here. Uh, so one of the conversations came up, could there be a trail of some kind that goes around the arrays and uses the existing, uh, access road that we're going to be working on? Again, that's, that's kind of a landowner question, um, it should not affect the safety or operations of the project. So we're Switzerland, I mean, I think it makes sense if that's something the community really wants to see and if it's amenable to the landowner. Right now, there's not public access on the property, they've been, you know, pretty vigilant about not having trespassers and votes, I think probably from a liability perspective. Um, so that's something that would need to be discussed. Lethrop also has an extensive trail system, um, that could potentially link, um, but again, that's in the same bucket of needing to be discussed with, with the family that owns the property and making sure that any concerns they may have are adequately addressed.
All right, thank you, Ethan.
I think the, the follow-up question, if I may, is, is about the ability for the applicant to work within their lease area?
Mm-hmm.
And whether, you know, whether that, whether working within your leased area has that same need to go back to the landowner or whether that's something, um, that's, you know, available in your lease agreement? Because we had a conversation about, you know, the life of this project, let's call it twenty-five years. You know, during that time, even, even the ability to cross over the lease.
Right.
Lease area would be potentially valuable, a- and not necessarily traversing the rest of the property. So I just didn't know if that is something that the planning board is interested in at least discussing further or whether it's a viable option or not to consider. It's just something that we don't wanna leave.
Right.
Undiscussed, given the twenty-five years, you know, that this, this use will consume this portion of the property, so.
Yep, Ethan?
I was just gonna mention that, um, again, the project will be fenced, so we're not gonna envision folks going through the arrays.
Right.
Uh, but to the extent that there are, uh, you know, people going around the edge of, of, that's something, again, I think that's outside of our lease area. Our, our lease sort of goes to the fence.
You're, you're fenced right to the edge of your leased space in most areas?
Yeah, um, so our lease, so again, we have rights over, you know, a certain acreage of this property that we can adjust based off of the design of the array. Uh, but so far, um, our lease is gonna hug our limit of disturbance all across the site.
Okay. So really, other than, than the roadways that you get access there, it, your lease area is within the fenced arrays?
Correct, yeah. So this is why, and, and when we spoke with Jeff, we are, again, we're open to conversations with the landowner, uh, given the relationship that we have with them. Uh, this is something that we brought up already, um, and, you know, if the town and the board wants us to go forward and, and push this with the landowner, we can try to do whatever we can to, to accommodate.
Have, have you had specific conversations with Pascama about sort of plans or access or things that they were hoping for, or is it more sort of theoretical?
Uh, they've shared plans, I think, that came from Conway, that the city has put forth, and, um, we've had a couple of conversations just looking at sort of the, the big idea.
Yeah.
And, and a more granular idea of what it would look like to have something that goes, again, discreetly around the arrays along the access road.
I, I think to the extent you guys are willing to have a conversation with the landowner, that'd be really helpful. I do think that this is, it's a pretty key part of, um, a lot of the still protected land in East Hampton. I think to the extent we can sort of try to get some public access, or at least some consideration if we want some in the future.
Right.
But, you know, I, I think that, that might be helpful.
You have some leverage now, and it makes a big difference to the city, use it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, I mean, certainly preserving optionality is something we've heard a lot about.
Right, yeah.
Uh, I guess we would encourage sort of separate processes here to the extent that, um, this could really open the, the conversation, given that we're stabilizing the rest of the property for a generation.
Yeah.
Um, it may give the community an opportunity to approach the family with, you know, potentially financial resources, you know, an option for a, a trail or something. Again, that, that can be a parallel, but not necessarily a dependent.
Right, and I, I really, I mean, one of the reasons I don't hesitate to ask you to talk to them is mostly because I think we have a window here where we're likely waiting for Conservation Commission and some of these other things, the culvert research, the new plans, that it may, we, we have a window here. It's not like we're boating at the end of the night or we're gonna kick it off and have you talk to a landowner. So I think there may be a window here where you could have that conversation and we'll see what happens.
Maybe we could ask you for some homework, uh, which is really clarifying, uh, general liability. You know, if, if a landowner is permitting any kind of access here in the town.
Mm-hmm.
How are they protected? That may be helpful.
Right, and my understanding is that if you are the leaseholder over the access road, you know, the, the negotiations would be through you for the, for the duration of your lease agreement. Um, the, the previous trail easement discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Was pretty quick to remove the liability, if there were an easement for members of the public to pass and repass. The property owner is not liable for, for something that happens in that.
The project owner and the landowner.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Both identified.
Right.
And was there a, a separate? And was there a, a separate agreement with the city to rectify that? Could you share that with us?
Yes. Yeah, which, you have that time.
Yep.
I would also like to point out that our access here is non-exclusive.
Right.
Um, so we can access it, but we can grant access to someone else, if that makes sense.
So you have a right under your lease to use those roads to access your leased areas, but you don't necessarily have the right to allow someone else to use it? That, that seems, right, that seems logical.
This would go back to the landowner.
Yep. Okay, any other comments or questions tonight from the public? You gotta come back up, I'm sorry. I know, we should have a passable mic, that would be good.
We're working on it.
Oh, really? Is that a?
It's a three D detector. It just picks up people speaking. Please continue.
Um, you have other projects. I don't know if they're in residential areas, but resale, that just, just came to my mind, resale of our property. Um, do you have any studies what this, that, what a project like this will do to the value of our homes? I don't know, you know, surrounding areas that you've done this in. So I'd be curious, am I gonna have, you know, am I gonna have value here?
Sure. We've had this come up a few times in the past, but does somebody wanna get into that?
Sure. Um, we're happy to share any studies. We've conducted studies, um, with external parties, external consultants. Um, I can, I'm happy to share that with you. Um, overall, we, we didn't see increase or decrease in property value in Massachusetts, um, but happy to discuss that further once you have the study.
I think some of the things we've seen in the past have been that there's some studies that show that people actually like being next to solar fields and they'll pay more for it. There's other, it depends on where you are and what the project is, but I think the DEP's official research on it has sort of been, it doesn't really have an impact. It kind of, yeah, it all comes out in the wash. But if they have specific studies that, in Massachusetts especially, that might be helpful.
We've asked for every solar project that's come before us and believe me, the abutters asked that question as well and every study that's been presented to us is exactly what he said.
Any other comments or questions tonight? Get some more steps in, come on up here.
Just a question.
We should all just sit right next to the microphone, so you guys just stand up again.
Um, I was hoping somebody could address the, um, EMF, electromagnetic frequency that's gonna be coming up then, how it affects. So there, the range that you have and the amount of, um, arrays, how will that impact the environment, the people and health issues?
Come on up again, Nico.
This is a great question, thank you. Um, we do have studies regarding that too. Um, I have them with me actually, but I would need to pull them up. I can share that with you. Um, but the radiation and the, like, EMFs are not that important for a solar array. Um, so I will get back to you on that with further detail. And Ethan, I think we talked about this extensively and we have a study regarding that, but.
Yeah, the, uh, Mass CDC has a report online that you can look at that addresses both noise and EMF.
Great.
I can share that with you.
Okay, yes, Jeff.
So just to, I guess, clarify, so the issue of loss of property value and the subsequent response and the issue about the environmental and health issues and the subsequent response, is that something that, does the board want to see that as part of your findings or is it just?
I think if you can, I think if you can report back generally sort of the way you did with this, you know, um, that would be helpful for us.
And cite the report or something.
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, we've seen those things before, but part of what we're doing is helping it get out to the public. And so I think if it's submitted here, then even if you're having conversations with specific landowners, we can at least keep it in the public view.
So that's a yes.
So, yeah, I think that'd be good. So.
Please head ready.
So Jeff, you're asking if that, this is something that should be a condition for like the vote or what?
No, just if, when you come back, I mean, we're gonna continue the hearing for another day. And so instead of simply, you know, emailing Deborah about the, the EMF or something, if you can just do a blurb to us and, and give us some of that publicly. Um, I think it makes sense to think of a, a few more of the things we talked about that we do wanna make sure that we're getting next time.
Yeah.
Um, so we talked about, uh, maybe looking at the issue with the, um, metallic fencing, the painting or coating of the fence. Um, the, uh, plans, specific plans for the pads with the inverters and the batteries and the transformer shown on it. Um, I, I would be curious if you do have any more conversations with either Lathrip or any of the other abutters about screening. Um, I mean, at some point, it's, if you don't show up and, you know, we can sort of imply that they're okay with it, but part of it is stuff that we sort of have an obligation to look at. So, um, I, in, and in connection with that, I'd be curious if you have some options you could present about temporary screening for that laydown area along the side there.
Construction only?
Constru- yeah, just for the period of construction when you're using that.
The laydown area specifically?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Um, and what else?
The, on the section, uh, that was down below, I think density of fencing was raised as well.
Yeah, I think if you could, if you could get back to us about sort of if there is, uh, um, especially I think on that one side facing the Maxine Circle, if there's options for sort of, um, sound mitigation in a fence option that you'd be willing to propose, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and then related is, I don't know. Some of the plans and information seem preliminary to present to the board, but so, you know, keeping, but so, so the information that is shown before the board is, is typically something that we need to have on file. So that, that plan, uh, is something that is not part of the record. Um, I think a, a planting plan, um, with the details showing the willows and how they mix in with other, the other planting, I mean, we don't have that, so that was a discussion, but I think that plan needs to come back to the board.
Yeah.
With a, with a specific, yeah, and, and what the board has encountered several times is making sure that the details on the plan show, um, the size of that planting.
Right.
Uh, usually the standard landscape architect is just, you know, size varies or, you know, six to ten feet. But what, you know, we'll, we'll kick it out in another meeting for that to say, size of that planting, so that's clear. Um, and if we do move towards some kind of approval process, there's a whole bunch of conditions that the board has placed on the, the most recent solar application, which talks about the timing for that install.
Yep.
Right, so, um, with the screening for the Maxine Circle folks, I mean, the expectation might be that that goes in during construction.
Right.
Right?
I think that would, I mean, our, our hope would, you know, obviously you put in the screening if it's temporary or whatnot on the, on the laydown area first and then also, I mean, in the past, we have done planting plans first to sort of screen that process that's going on. Um, whether or not that's feasible on a specific site, I guess I'd be curious to hear about that, but I think that sort of the order of operations on site and to the extent we can get screening in place earlier in the process or first, um, that's obvi- obviously preferable for the abutters.
Protect the neighbors. May I ask, is that happening with the, uh, other project as well?
Yes, we do, so we.
Through construction screen?
Yeah, so we did, a- again, they had a construction, um, they had, they had buffers for construction, some of which is permanent and some of which was temporar- temporary. And then there's interior screening, some of which I think was pre-project and some is afterwards.
Yeah.
Jeff will have detail.
So, yeah, we can get you that, um, special permit if you wanna see what they did. Um, but I think if we can just sort of think about if there's any sort of limitations on the site, um, or the project that may impact that or prevent us from doing that. Um, I, we'd wanna talk about that so we have a chance to flesh that out.
Speaking about prepping for a next meeting, uh, you, you have another, I think I heard you say you had another meeting scheduled, uh, was it in August? Is that what I heard?
Yes, I think the.
Conservation.
Twelve.
Conservation, the twelfth? And is it the intent that we're gonna meet again before that, uh, to discuss these things and have hopefully what we need another meeting after? Cause we clearly need to have that resolved before we can come to our resolution. At least I think we do.
I think, I mean, my hope is we could do this in one more meeting after ConsCon.
So schedule it for later in August?
Yeah, um, that would be my thought. I mean, I think that.
How do you all feel about that?
Um, so there's one thing that I've been thinking about is, to me, they're two, I mean, of course they're intertwined, but they're two independent bodies. So what we can do is if we wanna meet before that, we can make, you know, if there is a vote, we can make that vote or like that approval contingent upon the issuance of.
Yeah, so we've, we've dealt with that before. We really, our special permit requires us to also address the stormwater stuff. And so for us, historically, what our process is, is that we defer to the Conservation Commission on that. And then, um, you know, based on their feedback and that process, we adopt it. So I think James is right, you know, we could, we could try to have a meeting earlier in August and make sure that everything is all tied up and done, other than the Conservation Commission, and then come back and have a vote. Or we could just put this after the Conservation Commission meeting and, you know, hopefully get everything buttoned down then. Um, which I think probably makes the most sense, cause I think that we're talking about one meeting that we need to do, but if you've.
Yeah, that sounds great to me. And what we can do in the meantime is while we wait for the order of conditions, we can be in communication, addressing the comments.
Right, so I think that makes sense. Um, so then the only other thing I'm thinking of, um, we still have one more culvert to hear back about, right, the first culvert? And we're gonna have both the town attorney and the engineer look at the decommissioning plan and see if there's any issues there.
Correct.
And hopefully if we get comments from those soon, then if there's issues with that, we could get you the comments before the next meeting so we can have a response to that too.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what's the, uh, Jeff, the next meeting time after the twelfth of August from the planning board?
Per the normal schedule, it would be August twentieth.
So real quick, before you continue that, any members of the public have any other comments or questions right now before we move this? Okay, thank you. So the twentieth would be the next?
Yep.
Does that work for you folks?
Sure.
Alright.
Right.
Hang on, I have your agenda for a second.
Yep.
I motion to continue to August twentieth, the continued, uh, Beacon Solar LLC, uh, special permit application.
One second, man.
One second?
Every one second, man.
That's what I heard.
That'll be at six, six o'clock.
Yeah, we'll set it for six o'clock, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, no abstaining. Okay. Alright, thanks a lot, folks, and thank you, members of the public for helping out with this too.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.